Okay, so there's more in the chat box and I don't know, I think our staff or there's some way we copy the questions.
Yep, that's right. We can download the chat box.
Let's gather that and see what we can bring together. I think I saw Todd Lang there from Iowa. Had contact with him in a long time. So, yeah.
Just so you know, Anna is here. I know that Amanda had to call back in, so she should be back on in about another minute or so.
Okay, and Len is here too.
He was. But I'm going to disappear.
Goodbye. Danielle, nice job, by the way. So I think the Commissioner's going to use her computer and show slides, and I think Len is going to help coordinate the Q and A. Hi, Commissioner. How are you?
Hi Harvey, hi. I wasn't, I just tuned in early because I'm so nervous about psychology. But it was a great discussion. It was a great discussion, so it was fun to listen.
Well, this whole issue of drop-off places and that setting up another institution of sorts. It's a good, and then again, the proper role of a peer and the valuing and, you know.
Because we're looking at stabilization centers, we need to talk with you guys about it and what those should really look like. You know, we'll involve you Harvey and your team because, you know, I agree, you don't want it to, as you say, just be another institution, but something that would really be helpful. So we need to talk.
The person who would know most is Steve Mitchell from People because
Absolutely.
He helped set up that center and apparently he just took it over.
Right.
The problem with that center is it's a 23-hour, you know, 58-minute.
Right.
It's not overnight, as far as I know.
Right, no, I think you're, I think you're right, you're right.
So Commissioner, first of all, to both of you, Amanda and Commissioner, thank you so much for coming on and doing this. We, we love having you and we love our partnership with you. And so you have a presentation you're gonna put, and then Len is gonna manage the Q and A, I think.
Right, yeah, so we'll, I think Amanda and I will talk for about maybe 20, 25 minutes, and then we'll have the rest of the time for Q and A, if that's okay?
Len, you're muted.
Oh.
You're muted, Len. You're muted. There you go, there you go.
Welcome, first of all. And yeah, that would work out fine because I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions. It is a town hall after all, so.
Okay.
So somebody's asking about that. This is the OMH Town Hall last year at the live conference. Commissioner Amanda were there. It was really a great discussion. And Commissioner, that's happened before at our conference where people have really responded. We always run out of time. We'll probably do that now. So I'll shut up and give you the floor here.
Thanks. I'm just gonna go through. Good afternoon, everyone. It's such a real pleasure to be here. I'm going to go through some slides just to talk a little bit about COVID and some other issues and some new things that we're doing. And then Amanda is going to talk a little bit about the MISC and the MISC Committee and a survey, a very fascinating survey that she did of our clients during the COVID. So we'll do, we'll set it up and we'll go through it relatively quickly, but the slides will be available and then we'll have lots of time to talk. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Just share this, let me see if I can do this. Okay. Okay, good. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. First thing, oops. This isn't. Okay, okay. First thing I just want to say is a big thank you to all of you. You've been part of a team that has really been just terrific going through this pandemic. And there's just been, as I wrote here, tremendous experience, tremendous spirit of sacrifice, cooperation, dedication. And all of you, I know, have been a big part of that. You know, we never closed. Our clinics stayed open, our residences stayed open. Our clinics switched a lot to telehealth, which was good, and I think that that has helped us. But we were there with all of you for our clients and we made sure that they were as safe and healthy as possible. So I can't thank you enough for being a part of that team. And I know there's a great deal of personal sacrifice that happened there. I mean, coming out and sometimes leaving families and others to take care of others, but I can't thank you enough. So we did keep our programs open with the help of telehealth. We did repurpose some of our inpatient acute care beds. They were used for COVID beds in the Article 28 and the Article 31 system. And we opened up some transient beds in the state hospital to be able to take some individuals who may be needed, still needed acute care. But we did that very judiciously. We helped really mostly with discharge planning to help people get safely home and out of the acute Article 28s. But we are watching those beds to make sure that they reopen to the extent that they're needed. One interesting piece of data, we tried to think of, well, how can we tell if things kind of carried on somewhat stable? And we looked at the number of, this is just a gross measure, it's only for a certain piece of population, but whether prescriptions were filled comparable to last year, and they were. So that was some good news. We felt that at least we knew that if clients needed medications, that they had access to them. There was lots of work that was done on controlling the spread, infection control, I won't go into all that. But one lesson learned was the importance of having a lot of personal protective equipment. And we are going to have stockpiles of that at the state system. And we are also working with agencies and providers across the state to ensure that they have enough stockpiled so that we don't get into some of the scrambling that happened at the beginning of the pandemic. Just very quickly, sadly, we had to close visiting to some of our facilities. We've now reopened visiting very carefully, pretty slowly, but because we just want to be sure that the virus doesn't get back into our hospitals. Right now, it's at an almost negligible rate. I think we only have one positive case and that person isn't even ill across the entire system. So we're in very good shape. We want to keep it that way. And I know for some, there's been a lot of anticipation of opening up the visiting again, but we have started. All our hospitals are doing visiting with all the appropriate infection control procedures. And that's important to keep going. The other thing that we're doing is, even though we used some iPads and other virtual connections during the pandemic, we're gonna keep some of that available going into the future as well. We found that sometimes it was able to have an increased contact with family members and friends who maybe couldn't come all the time to actually visit in person. So we're going to do a lot of work to make sure that that's available as well as in-person visiting. And we've also begun to increase all our programming in all our facilities and in our TLRs, et cetera. You know, we have to watch for social isolation. We have to make sure that we're keeping the six feet distance. So things are going a little slower than before, but we're really reopening, just as the phases are reopening across the state. And I just can't thank everybody enough for their cooperation and help during all this time. A big change has been telehealth, and I think that that offers us some possibilities going into the future. You know, in March, 35% of claims for Medicaid were telehealth. By April, 90% of all Medicaid claims were telehealth. Prior, in January, it was less than 1%. So definitely, we have increased dramatically the use of telehealth and telephone. Now, I know there's an issue, but some clients don't have access to this kind of technology. We're trying to figure out a way that we can make sure that that gets expanded so that everybody who could use it will be able to use it. But it certainly is an additional tool to be able to connect and to stay connected with people. And we expect that going into the future, there's gonna be a balance of the use of telehealth. And certainly now, telehealth and telephone are both reimbursed by Medicaid. There's a lot of lobbying to get them reimbursed by Medicare, and a lot of the commercial payers are paying for that. We also made telehealth easier. You don't have to have an in-person initial visit if it's not necessary. We've expanded the kinds of providers and type of providers, the locations, et cetera. And then a major expansion into the use of telephonic, telephone, if it's necessary. And we're going to be putting all those into regulations. So most of the flexibility will remain permanent going into the future. I've had a lot of questions about that. Is some of what we've been doing going to be able to go into the future? And yes, it will. So that's, that's good news. We also did a survey, and Amanda's gonna talk later about even more data from the survey, to ask whether or not individuals and families, recipients of families felt that it was helpful, easy, and effective. And about 86% did. So that's good, that's good news. Some felt it wasn't, and we need to understand the reasons why, but also did eliminate some barriers. Some people actually felt more comfortable using it. Others felt it really helped because of transportation and other kinds of issues. So again, I think the future will be a blending of the use of telehealth and of all the very sad and tragic losses that this virus has caused. This is maybe one good thing that has jump-started us to use technology perhaps a bit better going into the future. I'm just gonna show this quickly, but this is one of the things that we're gonna be facing over the next, maybe nine months, a year, longer. On this, the impact of COVID-19 on the entire population. And every study that's been done, everyone has looked at this, has found anywhere from 40 to 50% of individuals will be impacted across the population with an adverse mental health effect by COVID-19. So this is really a, an epidemic of its own following the pandemic. And we have to be very aware of the kinds of services we're going to have to have in the future. There'll be expected to be a high incidence of depressive disorder, post-traumatic stress, anxiety, trauma, stress reactions. And then the CDC did this study and asked individuals if they'd seriously considered suicide in 30 days before completing the survey. The survey was June 24th to 30th. And the numbers are high. Overall, 10% of adults, but higher among younger adults, 18 to 24, and higher among our Hispanic, Black communities and essential workers, as high as 21%. So that's a very disturbing result of the survey, and a lot of work, which I'm gonna talk about later, is focused on suicide prevention going forward. Other high-risk groups include healthcare professionals, up to 50% having adverse impact. And those, particularly those who have lost also income or employment. We also know that depression and suicide are things that increase significantly during bad economic times. And we're forecasting sadly that these times may be bad going forward. So that's an issue. So, and youth, well, we don't have data yet from some surveys. We do know that after 9/11, overall, there was a 25% adverse impact on school-aged kids. So what are we doing about it? A couple of things. One is our emotional support helpline is there, 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. daily. We've had over 28,000 calls so far. Most of these individuals who called the helpline had never had a mental health contact before. So it really is people being more comfortable calling, asking for help, and I hope ultimately can be a bit of a decrease in the terrible stigma sometimes is associated with asking for help. We also did receive a $100 million FEMA grant. This is going to enable us to hire close to, I think, well over 1,000 counselors across the state who will be able to do crisis counseling, specifically crisis counseling for people post the pandemic. Now, the FEMA grants are very, very manualized, and they are put together by the federal government. But I do want to say that individuals who would like to do crisis counseling in a FEMA grant, it certainly peers would be a great group if anyone is interested in wanting to do that kind of work. And we'll be getting all the announcements out. But it's a manualized approach. You have to do it the way FEMA wants you to do it. But FEMA's done this after many, many disasters. They know how to do it. And it will enable us to do some really effective crisis counseling among, among the eight counties across the state. And that includes New York City, Erie, Dutchess, Orange, Suffolk, Nassau, and Westchester. So we're going to be doing, those are the counties that were the hardest hit in Rockland. Those are the counties that were the hardest hit by the pandemic. And basically, we will be doing crisis counseling, crisis outreach, media campaigns, et cetera, for people to seek help if they are feeling any adverse effects from the pandemic. So this is very exciting, and I think it will really help us going into the future. We will continue our helpline. We're also doing, we have a website and a lot of social media presence as well. We also have texts and something called coping circles, which is a group of experience for individuals who want to talk about their experiences of the pandemic. And we ran that over the summer, and we're deciding whether we're going to continue to run it. And it seems to have had good results for individuals who took part in the coping circles. So the suicide, I'm not going to go through all these things, but I just want you to know that we're so aware of the suicide risk as post-pandemic and, well, I shouldn't say post, we're still in it. But during this pandemic and then even after the pandemic, so we're doubling our efforts in just about every possible way. And we're working in high-risk neighborhoods, high-risk areas to get the word out about suicide prevention strategies. We're doing trainings. We have done some trainings with, we did with DOHMH. We issued some guidance for peer specialists on supporting people with suicide. We were also working with, the New York City EMS is just one example, of first responders that we're doing some train-the-trainer work with so that they can then train all their EMS workers to, to have the train-the-trainers to work with their EMS workers who may be at risk. We're also doing a lot of work with the reopening of schools. And we've already done about 1,700 individuals trained, and we're going around to all the schools offering assistance. And we'll be working with the schools that are interested in setting up a mental, school-based mental health clinics. We have had those, they've almost tripled in the last couple of years. We went from like 200 about three years ago to almost 900 now. So we're very involved in trying to do outreach into the schools and families, offering us help, assistance, and teachers as well. There's a little bit of chaos in some of the opening of the schools, but I think once that settles down, these issues are going to be prominent in everyone's mind. And then we're also doing in certain minority communities, young Black youth and Latina, younger Latinas, and also doing work with individuals who've lost income. One other point, this is something that we really have to pay attention to. I think COVID showed us all just how serious the healthcare disparities were because there was such a disparity in terms of loss of life and suffering among our Black and Brown communities compared to our White communities across the state. So we really need to look at what healthcare disparities, we need to look at the degree to which our care systems and the work that we do might be contributing to that. And so we're going to be doing that across the state. We've already started a seminar series to work on this, asking providers and ourselves, the New York State Office of Mental Health, to look at ourselves and try to understand better how we might be contributing to some of the healthcare disparities and some of the racism that exists in our society. So we're gonna be working very hard on this, and we would love your input and your feedback as to how to do better. This is just, Amanda will be talking more about the survey, but also as part of her survey, she found again, these kinds of disparities, that again, our minority communities are facing not just mental health issues, but all the other challenges of income, employment, food during this pandemic, disproportionately. And then how important it is to deal with those, the impact. Again, so we're going to be doing a lot of internal work, and we're going to be doing some research as well to understand where in the state the disparities exist and how we need to improve those things in terms of housing, income, education, and the care, and also the treatments that we provide. So we have to be ready for the future, and so there's a few things we're enhancing. One is telehealth, which I talked about. The other is we've looked very carefully at our crisis system, and we're going to be working on improving and making more robust the crisis system, including recently, the regulations are out for crisis residences, and they will be opening up hopefully across the state. And certainly, the ability to be paying for them through Medicaid will be there. A variety, our mobile crisis interventions are now in mainstream Medicaid as well as the HARP program. So that makes it easier in many ways financially for, to run mobile crisis teams. We're also looking at developing similar crisis stabilization programs towards it already exists in New York. We have a few that are really very well-run and doing very well. We would like to expand that. And we would also like, again, your feedback on what would really work. You know, I was listening, I don't know how many of you were on the earlier panel that talked about crisis residential. And the point was made, which is absolute crisis stabilization, the point was made, which is absolutely true. If you don't have the service array that then connects people after someone comes to a stabilization center, you're just setting up another drop-off place that isn't effective. So combined with this, we're working on intensive outpatient, working with our CHC, CDCHCs, and other systems of care to really make sure that if someone does go to a crisis stabilization center, that there is now a follow-up, a place for the wraparound services that they really need. And these should also involve tremendous work with peers, et cetera. So we need all of you as a part of this, as a part of connecting all the services together for someone and being there to work with individuals. So this is something we're gonna be working on. The 988 number is gonna be coming in 2022, and that 988 number will be a crisis mental health number. I think it just passed the House today, so it just has to go, both have, has now passed both the House and the Senate. What that will mean is that in 2022, there will be, you can call 988 for a mental health crisis, just like you call 911 now. And the hope is that we can set up a system where individuals will never have to go to police, except in very rare circumstances. And we'll have the supports there. And obviously, peer connections is gonna be critical in all that work. So we'll be working with all of you, but we've gotta, you know, some time to get ready so that when that number appears, we can really have a very robust system that can really serve people well and enable people, if they are in crisis, to get the help they need and not necessarily have to go into hospitals or emergency rooms, et cetera. So we'll be working on that. So this is just the crisis system, I should have put this one up. This was the crisis system expansion. This includes the mobile crisis, residential stabilization, and the lifeline, 988 number, that will be there hopefully by 2022, and we're getting New York State ready for it. Now, just a word about getting off COVID for a minute and getting to something that we hadn't done very well at the Office of Mental Health, which was our HCVS services. It was just too, a bit too bureaucratic and too difficult to get those services. So we went back to CMS, because once you get these things set up, you gotta go back to CMS. And we got a, now a different approach, that basically you'll be able to order HCVS services, including peer services, employment, and education support, et cetera, pretty much get them the same way you get any other service. So basically, if you and the person you're working with or your therapist say, you know, I think this would be helpful, you agree, you want it, that can be arranged without having to go through a whole series of assessments, et cetera. But this can be, just like if someone said, I think you need to talk to a social worker, you need to talk to a psychologist, or you need to, now, I'd like you to work with a peer, the peer service will be paid for. And so this should be much, much easier. Now, how you do it and how it's working, I'm just gonna put this next slide up because Nicole Haggerty's gonna be talking about this on Thursday, and she can explain it all in a way that's very simple. The important thing here is it's been simplified. And basically, we should see a big jump, hopefully, in the use of HCVS services, and we really would like your assistance in that. We do not want to lose the money that has been put into the system for this. And to do that, we have to really get the services out there and get, enable people to access them easily. So hopefully, this change into the core, the acronym of CORE, will help enable that happen. And we've really listened to you, and we've listened to Harvey and others who told us that the way we had this working before was just not working. And so we really, we think that this will, will work. It comes from a lot of advice that you had about how to simplify. And so we're looking forward to this being a very positive future and now being able to double, triple, quadruple the kinds of the services that are out there. So future challenges, I think, involve being ready for, we have to get ready to be able to deal with what might be a significant increase in services that will be needed for individuals dealing with the experience of the pandemic. We have to decide this new telehealth world, what's the best mix of telehealth and in-person services. And then we have to do a lot of prevention and outreach. If one thing viruses teach you is that prevention is important, and I think this is really important. We have to work within our schools. We have to do a lot of prevention among those who are losing employment and among our communities that have been most affected by the pandemic. And so now, I would like to turn it over to, oh, to, just one word quickly about the budget. It's a tough budget. Basically, $10 billion shortfall, $8.2 billion local assistance reductions. But the good news is that excluding supported housing. So even though there will be reductions in the state aid letters, it will not include supported housing. So in other words, supported housing is exempt and protected. And I really have to thank budget, your advocacy, everyone's advocacy, for ensuring that our supported housing is protected even in these very difficult times. So now, I'd just like to turn it over to Amanda. Seka's going to talk about MISC. But before that, I just want to congratulate Amanda because I know she's receiving your prestigious award. And I just have to say my heartfelt congratulations to her for receiving the Brendan Nugent Award. And I just have to read what the Brendan Nugent Award is. It's to an inspiring peer leader promoting and advocating for the empowerment of people with psychiatric disabilities in New York State. I just can't think of a better way of defining Amanda. It's been such a pleasure to have her working with us at OMH. We're so proud that she's a part of our team, and I can't thank you enough for recognizing that. And it's just so exciting that she's getting this award. And now I'll turn it over to you, Amanda. And I think I'm supposed to click. Can you?
Can you actually, I shared my screen. Can folks see the slide that says MISC?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Yes.
So, awesome. So thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a couple more topics to address, and we'll open it up for questions. We wanted to take the moment to let you know about an important initiative that hopefully will make the promise of community inclusion for all reality and how you can get involved. So the, the most integrated settings coordinating council, the results of New York complying with the recommendations made in the Almstead Act. And with the decision, many of you are familiar, it's the Supreme Court ruled that, in accordance with the ADA, that states have an obligation to provide services to individuals with disabilities in the most integrating setting appropriate to their needs. And the MISC was established to serve as the oversight body for New York Almstead Implementation Plan. And it was established in 2002, and again, is responsible for ensuring that New Yorkers of all ages with physical, intellectual, developmental, and mental disabilities receive care and services in the most integrated settings appropriate to their needs. And the council is a cross-systems partnership consisting of representatives from multiple state agencies and nine appointed public representatives, the state agencies included here. Together, these agencies in partnership and collaboration with public advocates and community-based partners are working hard to ensure that all New Yorkers with disabilities are afforded the opportunity to live the lives of inclusion where people live, work, travel, and engage in their community. I also want to highlight that Harvey Rosenthal is an assembly-appointed member of the council, and Commissioner Sullivan is currently serving as chair. Our next meeting is actually tomorrow. So for more information about the MISC, either if you just Google NYF MISC, but put the website up here. The next convening is tomorrow, and public access for you to view the council meeting and to submit public comments, the link is provided here. Also, if you go to the MISC website, you'll see the link that connects you to the telecast. It's fully accessible for the hearing and visually impaired. And again, it's a Zoom meeting, but everyone can have an opportunity to submit public comments through the participation form. And if you have questions about it, you can email me directly tomorrow. So as Commissioner Sullivan alluded to, we wanted to share some information from the survey that we conducted for recipients of our services and families. So the intention of the survey was to gain actionable data that would inform OMH's program and policy decisions moving forward. It was available in English and Spanish. We also heard from the field that it was translated in Bevo and Mandarin and Cantonese. The target audience were individuals who participate in our services, OMH licensed programs, OMH-run programs, and programs overseen by local government units. It was developed in collaboration with multiple departments within OMH and disseminated through a lot of different listserv, trade organization, peer community practices, field offices. Give a shout out to Carlton and Adam for disseminating through your listserv. It was on Facebook. We got it out there. And it was a part of a larger report to, again, to provide that actual input. And we were very excited to receive input from 6,004 people. And personally, I may be very hopeful about the future opportunities to get large-scale input from our most important stakeholders, the people who participate in our services and their families. So be on the lookout for more surveys. We really, the data is just extraordinary. And I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank all of you that helped get this survey out there. I know many people connected with individuals they served who didn't have access to the Survey Monkey platform to fill out the survey over the phone. We even heard of some instances where providers mailed the survey to individuals they served and entered the data on their behalf. My colleagues in consumer affairs were on the phone taking survey responses pretty much nonstop for the first two weeks that the survey was open. So we don't have time to go through all the questions, but Commissioner Sullivan and I want to share some highlights. So close to 40% of the survey respondents, I So close to forty percent of the survey respondents identified that there was moderate or significant increase in anxiety stress. And experienced the mental health symptoms during the pandemic. Thirty percent reported um symptoms were not impacted by the crisis. Thirty percent reported a slight increase. Fifteen percent uh of the respondents reported a significant increase. We acknowledged that many people have had difficulty coping with the pandemic and maybe drinking or using drugs more frequently than they did before the pandemic. Um, fifty-four percent of the respondents reported that they've never used drugs or alcohol. And the second highest response, thirty-three percent, reported no change in the use of alcohol or drugs. Seven point five percent reported a slight increase in use and two point five uh percent reported a significant increase. And then finally, three percent reported a decrease in use. Uh, as Commissioner Sullivan noted earlier, um, as an agency, we were very concerned about the level of support. That folks we serve were receiving in the first few months of the pandemic. We were pleased to see that eighty-six percent of the respondents felt that they were receiving um enough support. We were also curious to know from whom folks were receiving support. Uh, ninety-eight percent of respondents identified providers and professional counselors. The second highest category, sixty-four percent, was from families. Twenty-seven percent reported receiving support from peer practitioners and fourteen percent identified other community support. We also asked about virtual supports. We were happy to see a good percentage of folks uh were connecting to virtual supports. When we have further analysis, we're hoping to gain more insight into what was most helpful. And to identify the disparities related to access to the technology, the means to connect to um the virtual support, including cell phones, data and broadband services. After that, we can use the drilled down data to inform our next steps to address these disparities. And this has been um a running conversation through um all of our uh presentations. So we recognize that that disparity is um there and we need to address it. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan um alluded to uh earlier that we saw a strong connection between. The impact of the pandemic and the social determinants of health. Um, here you can see the areas where respondents identified um where they or their loved ones experienced challenges. You can see income benefits, employment, food, toiletries and clean clothes, transportation and education. And we're all up between twenty-five to thirty-four percent. Housing um is at fifteen percent. I want to stress that these are our very preliminary findings and further analysis is underway. But to kind of glean some, our first insights, you know, we, the survey found that there was widespread consistency among the challenges. Uh, recipients reported uh during the pandemic. Again, uh, income benefits being uh one of the largest challenges. All by employment, toiletries, clean clothes, food, transportation, education, um, online education, housing. There were only slight deviations among the response counts for each of these challenges portraying that none of the challenges were standalone concerns, rather uh very tightly interconnected. And excluding the responses from recipients who were satisfied with OMH supports or did not find the question applicable. Uh, the following top three themes were identified as what OMH could be doing uh to support during this challenging time. Among those three were uh programming resources, telehealth, roads, acts, care of manager visits, recovery centers, et cetera. Social resources, including uh phone calls, emails, Zoom, information on COVID as needed. And then those physical resources, including food, money, transportation, uh PPE and technology. Uh, one of my biggest takeaways from reviewing the data confirmed my position that the people we serve are resilient. We've had an opportunity to see how we can leverage the strengths of the people we serve. Um, and the value supports identified in the survey to inform a system of care that is strength-focused and truly uh person-centered. The top three strengths um from our preliminary uh review of the data uh that people identified as um uh helpful to them. Could hope, resilience and strength. Um, again, as Commissioner Sullivan mentioned, the majority reported that telehealth was effective and hope that it will remain um available. There are, there were perhaps a preference or mixed methods uh of in-person and uh tele-support that like Commissioner Sullivan mentioned earlier. Um, and when asked what one might need in the coming months in terms of mental health services. Uh, close to half the recipients uh specified continued or increased access to telehealth support and general support. And another big takeaway was the confirmation that social determinants are critical to address moving forward. As we continue to think about how we provide services and support. So uh, the next steps, as we speak, the data is is currently being drilled down by region and demographics. Uh, results from that analysis, we're hoping will be available uh for dissemination uh by October. And in the interim, questions about the survey, um, please uh do not hesitate to reach out to me. My email um is on the screen and. Uh, thank you all for that. So Harvey, I guess we could uh go to questions and answers?
Yes, Lynn is gonna lead, although I wanna come in and uh be bad. I wanna be bad here. First, I want to thank you very much for your leadership and your candor. You know, Commissioner, you've really been great about that all the way through. And for your responsiveness and Amanda, your leadership and your openness. Uh, you can tell I'm heading for the bad news, right? So uh, but really, you've taken it all very seriously and you've given, I think, all of us a lot of confidence and. And some, you know, that, that you're at the wheel and, but I would be remiss and you would expect me to say this, that. On the heels of the study saying the need is only gonna increase, we all got a cut yesterday. We'll talk again. We would have three months of twenty percent. I know that OMH is trying really hard. I'm not really um pressing you. I just, I just need to make a public statement on behalf of my folks. That, you know, this is, this is the worst time to keep sort of cutting. We're gonna be taking it up with the governor and the legislature and what have you, but I just, I need to say it, but I know that you're. I can tell that you're, I mean, you did the advocacy on the health thing, which we very much appreciate. So we're just looking for the whole enchilada and we'll just, we'll keep working at it.
I think you're, you know, Harvey, your voice and the voice of you is is very, very important. So I think it's important, um, even in these difficult times, that um everyone understands just how serious it is that um these cuts will be. And just um and to mitigate them as much as possible. So please keep your advocacy. I think no one in the state wants to do this. I can tell you that um Budget people are just as torn. But we need all the voices. So please, I appreciate what you're saying and continue to say what you think is important. Please.
Thank you, thank you. Lynn, I'm old, Lynn.
Thanks, Harvey, and thanks, Commissioner, and thanks, Amanda. Uh, I'm intrigued that, and I'm very thrilled actually, that you got a FEMA grant and you're gonna be hiring a hundred million dollars worth. I think a hundred million is going towards a hundred councils. Is that correct?
No, about, no, it's going to, it's almost, I think it's about thirteen hundred councils.
Oh, that's even better.
Yeah, no.
I know that you'd mentioned that peers um could do the job and we'd love to know a little bit more about how we can target peers to take some of those jobs. And also because uh communities of colors were, color were impacted the most. How can we make sure that um people of color um get those positions as well?
Yeah, well, we're going to be recruiting. Um, there's um, I think uh. The city is going to be putting out an RFA and around the rest of the state, providers have come forward. And we will be getting out the information as to how you can, they're going to be hiring. In other words, you're going to have pay um certain providers who will hire the cohort who then get trained. A very specific training which is done by um on a FEMA manual, et cetera. So that will be getting all that information out. So individuals, depending upon where you live in those counties, um you would contact those providers. That would be the places where you would get the training, where the paycheck would come from. And you would then apply to be um one of the members of that sys, of that uh provider cohort. And basically the numbers of um counselors are set up by population needs. And also we did a deep dive into and um the communities of color that would need additional supports. So yes, we're going to be out there trying to get members from those communities to be doing some of the crisis counseling. And also um targeting those communities with more help. Um, and and outreach, um, the combination of outreach media for people to come get the crisis counseling. But then it's also, so those providers will be clearly set, we'll have all this on the website. So people will know how to contact and who to contact and say, I'm interested. This is a big workforce to hire so over a thousand peer counselors, hopefully all peers, but counselors across the state. Um, it's a big job. So believe me, we're looking for people who want to do this work. Because um it's not gonna be easy to get enough. And the way FEMA funds you, it's not funding forever. It's funding for a period of time. So it's so important to get the services up and starting as quickly as possible.
And do we know if there's uh some educational barriers that will be?
Um, I think you need to have a um, oh boy, no, that will be on the thing. I I don't think there's much in terms of, I think you definitely have, I think you do have to have a high school diploma, but I'm not sure. Amanda, do you need more than that or is it the G, uh, high?
No, I have minimum high school diploma.
Yeah, high school GED.
Or I think high school equivalent too, but I could check about that.
That's great to hear, really. So I'd like to pivot, though. I'd like to go back to um what you said about the uh hospitals. And I'm wondering if you could clarify um what the state protocols are for um regarding the hospitals at this point?
In terms of um visiting?
And and what, and passes and things like that?
Yeah, well, the visiting um has been opened up at all facilities, but depending upon where you are. Um, you might have a slightly more intense um either screening procedures or um infection control procedures. So basically, you know, you have to wear masks, you have to have your temperature taken. Um, you have to keep the social distancing. All those things are still in place. And I think it, while it's, um, it can feel burdensome, the reality is that we just can't let this virus back into the facilities. So basically, you have to follow the infection control procedures, but they are otherwise open. In terms of passes, that again depends on the phases throughout um the state. But I think most now are at a point where that can be done again with a lot of careful advice to infection control procedures, checking when you come back. Um, we have to make sure that you have no signs of symptoms. And depending upon the area of the state, um, we may be keeping a special eye on someone who's been outside who's come back in. But we are opening all those things up. We're also increasing the programming again um in the hospitals, but again with social distancing. So groups will not be as large, um, you know, and we have to kind of make sure they're in the right spaces, et cetera, throughout the system. So it's, we're, we're kind of um opening the way most of the state is opening up. If you look at some of the guidance for um, you know, other kinds of uh congregant settings. Um, so we're, we're being very careful, but we are reopening. And hopefully if we don't get another surge, we can continue this reopening across New York because New York right now is still doing very, very well.
You know, speaking of a second surge, uh, I've, you hear in the news that there might be a second wave. I was wondering what your thoughts are in terms of your um readiness to, to, to have to go back, to take a step back if we need to?
Yeah, well, what we would do is, the first thing we would do is follow all the CDC guidelines, et cetera. We have now, I believe, that all our hospitals we've reached were very close to the mark of a forty-five day supply of PPE. So that we will have in warehouses, basically. So that should we have a surge, and that's forty-five day supply of maximum need. So that would be the forty-five days worth of PPE we needed at the height of the pandemic. So it's really quite a lot of PPE. And we will have that stored um across the system of care that would be able to cover. And we're working with other agencies to have it. So that's one thing. Then we would have to reinstitute um some of the um infection control guidance. But we've learned a lot. Sadly, we learned it um sometimes by just the experience of this virus. As to what you have to do to protect people from the virus and we would just have to reinstitute some of those more um difficult precautions again if there's a surge. Um, we, right now, are in very good shape um on our campuses and in our hospitals and across New York State generally, we're in good shape. And we want to kind of keep it that way, but if there was a surge, we might have to reverse some of the visiting policies, et cetera. Again, we just might have to. Hopefully that will not happen. Hopefully that will not happen.
I totally agree with that. About, I'd like to pivot again back to um formerly known as HCBS services and now Core Services. Um, do we know what it means to people that are currently in those services and how might they be impacted?
That should be the same. There shouldn't be any real impact on people who already have the services. The problem has been getting the authorization and getting through all the paperwork to get the services. So the individuals who are already getting them, that will continue. The issue is now that there'll be an easier way to get to those services than before. I mean, it was just too burdensome and you had to do too many, run through too many bureaucratic hoops to get what you needed. This should be much more like um any other, anything else that is needed. The way we just do business as usual, hopefully we'll be able to just have uh HCBS services um applied for in exactly the same way. So you don't have to go through the assessments and the treatment plans and go through the health home to manage care, all that kind of stuff, which made it so difficult. But no, people who are currently getting it should not be impacted, no.
That's, that's great. And of course, the, the assessments kind of doing away with those, uh, which. Really, um, unfortunately got in the way of people accessing the services and getting approvals. All that is gone now?
Yeah, I think now, again, um, Nicole knows everything, but it's pretty much gone. I think there has to be some documentation that's needed in some way. But not anything like it was before. No different really than anything else that you would be pretty much documenting. It's now a service under what they call a rehabilitation model in a clinic. So it becomes a basically a clinic service. Like any other.
Yeah.
So you have to document that, but you don't have to go through all those other hoops.
I was wondering, Amanda, if you might be able to talk um about um the Employment First Initiative. As you know, I'm, I love uh talking about employment and I wonder if uh, what's been progressing on that front? Is it, uh, is it a part of the MISC and um how, how are, how are we pushing employment as uh? Really a therapeutic intervention for people in recovery?
Sure, it definitely is a focus of uh the MISC, uh, employment being um one of, as, as you know, one of the greatest contributors to full community inclusion. Um, I don't have, the, you know, we uh promote employment throughout uh all of our programming. Um, an anecdote I wanted to share is that um that learned from CPI that uh. Access to supported employment services has gone really well um during the pandemic, particularly with the telehealth option. So people have ha, uh, reported, um, and I could get uh quotes uh from the Center for Practice Innovations. But people have reported uh being able to connect more with their supported employment specialist uh with the telehealth option. The employment specialists are able to uh contact more people throughout the day um in providing those supports. And we've heard anecdotally through Consumer Affairs that um, you know, a lot of people are uh. Really interested, if not more interested in engaging um in employment now. Um, and so we're trying through every part of our system uh to um encourage employment. Um, but as a social determinant of health and we're very committed to it.
So we have a lot of activity in the chat box. I'm gonna get to, to some of these questions. Um, one of the questions is uh regarding the CMS approval. Um, is there a place where we can look at um that information? Is it online? Is, was there a letter sent? Is there someplace we can look at that?
You, um, you mean for HCBS?
Uh, regarding, yes, the changes in HCBS, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think um Nicole will be doing this on Thursday, but I think, um, I'm hoping. It's, if it's not, it will be very soon on the website in terms of how to look at um uh her presentation. Everything else will be on our website about the HCBS. And look, and you can go there and figure, and see what's available, but she's going to be doing it in great detail on Thursday. But yes, we'll have it on the, her presentation will be available on the website.
And we will put that on our website as well.
That'll be great.
Here's a question um from John. Patients at state uh hospitals are told that they cannot be discharged. If they do not have housing to go to and or have to do community time, they cannot be discharged till sometime next year?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not exactly sure about the question, but no, there's nothing that says that you have. And we, we have, I just looked uh today and I think we discharged, um, because I always kind of look at the numbers this. Just in the past week, we discharged another eighty individuals from, so there's nothing holding up discharged now. Now, this issue of housing, I think we really, really encourage people not to leave state hospitals if they don't have a safe housing. And sometimes this can be a bit of, quite honestly, a delay in getting that housing. But we've been able to get priority for many of our patients and we want them to have safe housing. It's, if you don't have safe housing, it's a kind of a shelter discharge and that's not always the best thing. Um, you know, someone has a right to that if they really want that, but we try to discourage that as much as possible because it's not a, not a good answer. But, on the other hand, we have. Cause it's not a, not a good answer. But on the other hand, we have to help people leave as soon as possible once they're ready to leave. And I think we're working very hard to have the housing there, but there's no delay. No, we're just, uh, individuals are leaving the state hospitals every day. Um, there's no, nothing says you can't leave until next year. No.
Great. That's, that's fantastic to know. Um, we've got a comment here to telehealth has helped, uh, this person tremendously. Um, how committed are you to keeping telehealth as part of, uh, an overall group of services?
Well, we're very committed to keeping it. I think again, we have to just, you know, I think we have to, it'll end up, I think, being a balance. But yes, we're going to continue telehealth and also telephone, telephone. Because some people don't have, uh, this kind of video kind of capacity and telephone can work as well. So we're going to be continuing and Medicaid will pay for both telehealth and telephone. As of, um, I mean, that's been passed by the legislature. The governor agrees with it. Um, we're just getting the regulations out, so that should be there. Right now it's being paid for on an emergency basis. The regulations will make it on a permanent basis for Medicaid and we're fighting very hard to get that for Medicare as well. So I think that, um, yes, we're going to continue it. I think there's been a lot of people who feel that it's been very, very helpful. And I think that'll be a personal decision made by an individual as to what, what should say better. They prefer telehealth, then now they can have that. I mean, that should be something we have available. Yep.
And, um, going back to the, uh, state hospitals, are the forensic, uh, units open to visitors at all?
Yes, the forensic units are also open. Yeah. I mean, again, you know, with all the precautions, it's a little, you know, have to be very, very careful, but yes, they are open.
Wonderful. Um, someone is talking about the, uh, your comment about you're following all CDC guidelines. And, uh, we're finding that, uh, some of the guidelines have been a little bit inconsistent lately. And, um, they seem to be influenced by the Department of, um, Justice. Uh, just wanted to, that's just a comment that a, a person had.
You know, you're finding, if you have any questions, please let us know. You know, I think that, um, you know, we want to be making sure that, that everyone is following the right, um, guidelines. And I'm not saying that sometimes people can't, you know, be misinformed or maybe not do it exactly right. But if you have any concerns, please, you know, please let us know, you know? You can, you know, you can even email, you know, me directly, you know, I N dot solvene dot O H dot, uh, N Y dot gov. But, um, also, you know, let anyone else know that you want to bump it up the line because we just want to make sure we're doing everything right.
Another, uh,
And I shared it in the chat box.
Oh, good, good. So they can share what the issue is and we'll get back to, and, and the person in the, um, uh, all the specifics. Okay? Great. Thanks, Amanda.
We, uh, we also, um, are aware that some smaller agencies are finding themselves in dire, um, financial situations due to COVID-19 and need to merge and, um, all things, all sorts of things are happening. And what can the state do to ensure that the, uh, the cuts kind of, uh, are done in a more planful, uh, approach as opposed to a hasty manner?
Yeah, well, we're work, we're working very close. You know, the cut, well, the, the withhold that has gone out has been to, um, the counties and the state aid, local aid to counties. So we're working very closely with the counties on, um, how they are potentially managing that if the withhold stays and becomes a reduction. So, um, yes, we're trying to do that. We're trying to prioritize certain services that, you know, really shouldn't be lost or how to help individuals. Those that are in acute distress. I mean, I know our financial guys are already talking to them to see what, um, we might be able to do. But, uh, you know, these are really tough times. It's going to be difficult. Uh, if there's no federal aid that comes through to the state, um, then, um, you know, there's a possibility that these 20% withholds will remain. So I think that this is, it's very, very difficult times. But we are working and, you know, some organizations, as your question said, um, are a little bit, have a little bit more of a, um, cushion. Others have very, very little cushion. So we're trying to work with those that are on the margin, um, to keep them whole for as long as we can. And we're working with the counties on prioritizing and, um, it's going to be something done jointly, um, with that. And with, you know, input from, um, the providers in the area.
I like the fact that you, you know, you're pushing us to keep pushing. So, uh, and we will do that. Um, hoping that more and more organizations, organizations will join us in, in pushing for the, uh, the most, uh, the, the, the way that cuts, if we have cuts are going to be done in a, in a way that's, uh, that, uh, hurts the least. Let's just put it that way.
No, absolutely. And we'll work with you on that. And that's why we fought so hard for housing. Cause we felt that that one just couldn't.
Right. We appreciate that very much.
But, but the other is, um, I can't thank you enough either and Harvey and all of you for your advocacy at the federal, you know, at the federal level. Um, believe me, that has been noticed by the state that you have been with us and been saying, you know, how important that is. And your voice, um, hopefully will be heard, but we really appreciate that as well. You have been terrific in saying that, you know, the state needs assistance at this time.
Especially given the statistics that you shared earlier with the increase in behavioral health services that are on the horizon.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Here's a great question, uh, sort of in response to your, uh, uh, talk about, uh, the, the, uh, new telephone, uh, services as opposed to video sort of, uh, services. Is the Medicare, uh, is the Medicaid rate going to be different for those two types of services?
Um, we're, we're, that's, that's still being discussed. Um, uh, so we're, we're working on that. Um, you know, we have our opinions, which I probably shouldn't say, um, but, uh, basically, um, I, I, you know, I think that great work can be done on the telephone. So we're looking to see. And we're, I'm, I'm not sure about that yet. So I don't want to commit. We're in discussions with, um, D O H and, um, you know, the Medicaid department on that as to what the rates will be. Uh, the tele, the video will probably be the, the same. Um, and we're, we're still discussing telephone.
And do you know if, um, telehealth is going to continue in pros?
Yes, yes. Uh, one of the things that, um, we're going to be putting out in the regulations is to continue it in pros. Yes. Pros, um, and to the extent that it's also used by ACT as well, to the extent that, that it works for ACT. So yes. I know it wasn't before, but the new regulations that we're preparing would include both of those.
Harvey, I see you and I see you chomping at the bits. So I wanted you to come in and ask some, uh, some questions that are on your mind.
I'm not chomping, Lynn. I don't feel any chomping going on over here. I do want to put in the box though, Gary, uh, Weiskopf sent me, there is a, um, oh, I don't want to send this to everybody, but there is a link for that C M S for waiver application. And there's a 30 day comment period. So there it is right there.
Oh, great. Thanks.
You may have said this before, but I missed it. The, all these jobs that will be available, how can people apply for them, did you say already?
Um, yeah, what we're going to be doing is there will be providers who will be, um, doing the training and, um, setting up the, um, system for that in that area or that, uh, place. Once those providers are chosen, you would apply to them, um, to get.
Okay.
Position. And they will be sending out notices saying, you know, you're interested, please apply. And that will be, you know, different providers depending upon, uh, where and stage.
Well, they'll do their own sending out. We couldn't, um, you couldn't give us a list and we could have everybody just.
We could do that. Sure. Once we get, absolutely. Yeah. No, that's a great idea. What we can do is we can get that for you and we'll let you know. As soon as that's all organized, we'll get it to you. You can send it out to everyone to make it easy. How to contact. For sure. Yes.
Yeah, I was just writing that in the chat box. Uh, Harvey, you're, uh, one of the most impressive lists are, so we'll rely on you for helping us get the, the word out there.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. It's a great thing.
Yeah, no.
You know, I think, I, you know, we do consulting in other states and I, I actually think it's true that New York has more peer jobs than peers to fill up. And no, no, no one can understand that in all the other states. So they're amazed by it. And this may be the same example. You, God forbid, we have more jobs than we can fill.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I hope.
Hope not.
Looks like Louis is coming in. So it looks like we're doing our farewell comments in three minutes, Louis.
Is it also possible to, uh, send the job announcements through the local access V R's where people are, uh, interfacing there and might, um, hear about jobs through that, uh, channel?
Sure, sure. We'll, we'll be able to do that. It's a great idea. It's a great suggestion. Yeah, we can do that. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, there's a lot of other questions here and I'm wondering if we might be able to, uh, copy the chat box and, and get back to you with some of these questions. A lot, a lot of questions. It's a very, very interesting town hall.
And we'd be, we'd be glad if you can get us the chat box and then we'll, we'll respond. Give us the ability to get back to people by email and we'll respond. We, you know, we'd love to do that. That would be great.
Harvey?
Thank you for your leadership. Thanks for coming on. Um, you know, and thank you for your work with us and your staff's work with us. We're, uh, and thank you for going to the governor and getting us that money back.
Thank you for everything you do, Harvey. It's, it's a terrific, uh, just a wonderful partnership.
Well, same here. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing you tomorrow at the M I S C.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Thanks a lot. Okay. Take care. Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So we need Tracy. Oh, there's Veronica Wayne.
There we go.
Will, chairs, it's. Have your way, have your way.
What a day, what a day. Um, I can't say, I can't say enough. Um, and this was, uh, just the first day. It feels that we have covered so much material. Um, you know, I, uh, we talked about, um, anti-racist systems and agencies. We spoke about federal policies being implemented or not being implemented. We had a, a great discussion from, uh, two very important chairs, I know from O M H. Uh, we had a number of, uh, discussions today that, uh, could be for other conferences, that will be it. You know, they don't need anything else, but for us, it's only the first day.
We're not hearing you, Tracy.
Try it again. There you go. No.
You might need to sign again, Tracy.
You might need to check out and come back in.
Even the wave made a sound.
Right, right. I do want to say that, you know, this has been a great day. Um, I enjoyed immensely reading the chat box comments uh, during the opening session and, um, it just really feels like family coming together. And, um, about as close as we can get to a, a live conference. I really needed this day. And, um, and Jesus, like Louis said, it's the first of four. And we've got things coming up like Stand Up For Mental Health with David Gruninger, um, The Best Of. We've got, uh, so many things that you would typically see at the Niapperas Conference, um, going to be happening in the evenings, uh, this coming Thursday and the following Tuesday. So please make sure that you join us in the evening as well. And we've always had great workshops. What we, part of what makes the Niapperas Conference so special is the extracurricular activities that people can, can attend at night. And, um, just want to encourage people to be a part of that.
Yeah. One, one last thing I want to mention also, I want to thank Harvey for the history lesson this morning, Harvey. You, I mean, um, you kind of put everything together, um, to really understand the history of, um, advocacy, um, behavioral health rights, human rights, right? Behavioral health rights as human rights in the state of New York. I mean, you gave us, uh, you know, close to 40 years of, 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 of events and decision-making and policies and things that worked and didn't work out. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, Louis. Thanks for asking me.
Yeah, the, the pictures were amazing. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Louis, I'm Louis Junior. Hello. So I, I just wrote down a few things just because it seems like this was a really short day, but there were, there were lots of things to pull together. So, um, I just want to, I just want to recap. So what I heard throughout the entire conference today is that we are in tough times. All the speakers had shared that, um, that we are in tough times. And Harvey, uh, as you did your, um, history lesson on Niapperas, um, the themes that echoed throughout these tough times that you said were that, um, that, that we're going to be better than good. I remember you saying that and that this is a day of healing and hope and, um, and celebrating, even though these are the, the toughest of times. So, um, so that just rang through, throughout. And, um, sitting with, um, with Kelly Davis in self-compassion and just knowing that, um, that our brains are, are some, are so magnificent, right? And that there's all this science and there's, there's this thing about neuroplasticity. So there's lots of great things. I'm so glad that these, um, that these workshops were recorded. Beacon of Health, um, your presentation was about, um, I remember you saying together we are stronger. So there's this, this echo of, um, of great, great hope and amazingness. And, um, all the respectful dialogues were amazing. And to have people share their stories and to have Ann and Amanda on, um, we're all so busy. So taking this time is great. Seeing pictures, um, memories, joyful tears. It's been, it's been a day. So, um, you know, celebrating you all.
You know, I just, I want to thank you both again. I mean, we've never had, I've never seen chairs play this strong a role and it was such a good role. And it's only day one. And I want to remind you, it's day one, not a four, but technically of six, because we have segments. So we have five more segments to go. So it's pretty amazing. I just want to say a theme for me that rang through the day was peer, peer workers, peer support. Peers with police, you know, peers, um, in the FEMA jobs and counseling by cat is job causing trouble here. But I think that remains and certainly Niapperas is going to be the place for that. Is, you know, what, what is the proper role for peers? Can they, but what's the right pay? Somebody asked that earlier. What's the right role? How do you guarantee if you contract for a peer, how do you make sure it's really, uh, the real deal? You know, Niapperas is kind of the home, home place for those questions. And, uh, there's a lot more. I think we should do a webinar. There's a number of webinar ideas that came up. The last thing I want to say is the thing that is most on my mind is the regions and stimulating the regions by having events of this kind, even Zoom wise, but you know, done particularly for a region with officials and providers from that region. Because this is a time for us to reinvent ourselves at the, at the regional level. We need that and people need, need us to be very visible there. So I hope we do that.
Yeah. I, I, I think that map, the map of all the counties, it would be great to put regional coordinators' names and phone numbers and post that on, on your website. So New York is big. Lots of regions.
And, and it's possible we'll do a forum for every region. I mean, it's not, doesn't involve traveling. It's just really organizing it so that the players are region-specific. Judges or police or peer agencies or whoever. It, it looks like we're going to be talking about alternatives to police first responders and just so-called drop-off centers, which we don't really want to get into. But these are cutting edge issues and it would be great to be that group that brings it to the surface in a region.
Absolutely.
Something that, um, that, um, I found very interesting is how the normal is going to include telehealth and telephonic, uh, approaches to connecting, counseling, providing support. And historically, right, uh, peer specialists, peer bridgers have been masters in doing face-to-face work. You know, this is an every. You know, this is a reeducation, you know, on how peers could do similar work through telehealth and telephonic technology. Now that, you know, people are being somewhat more careful in doing activities outside. So, so I look forward to seeing how, you know, Niapperas could be one of those leaders also to reeducate the force, the workforce on how to do this and to do it effectively and efficiently.
Well, funny you mention that. We've been in discussions around that. Around workforce training, especially with all the changes that are coming. And absolutely, it's a key area. You know, Louis, I was on a call the other day with actually somebody you know, works in your neck of the woods. And we were talking about training and the workforce. And honestly, the person said, it's been so long that we've had psych rehab training, like back in the day with Bill Anthony's people, that we lost a generation. Imagine him saying that? That the, you know, that the last generation has not been trained that way. And we've lost those skills. That's such a powerful statement. So we are in discussion with other groups around what we can do about that. I sure hope that's what you were talking about because I'm pretty tired.
No, no, absolutely. Again, it's interesting because, you know, we are looking at that for, you know, clinicians and counselors and providers. And, and, you know, peers are a very important part of that, those groups of providers. And they could lead the way. I mean, they have led the way in connecting and engaging and congruency. They could, you know, possibly also lead the way on how to use these technologies in a, in a better way, empathic, compassionate, you know?
I don't know if you heard Ron Manischite in the public policy, but Ron Manischite said, what he always says is they ought to turn the system over to peers. Who want to just run all these pieces. And so we'll see. I mean, you know, definitely, we need a workforce. Especially, you know, with the changes that are coming around core and pros and peer services. This is a time to make sure we're building on solid ground and if people have those skills and that, I'm thinking. So we're on that. We're trying to work something out with someone you know.
So the the theme of the conference, Rise Up, has really resonated with many, many of us today. Connection, community, culture. So it's been really nice.
Was the exhibit, did people go into the exhibit? Did you or did you get any feedback?
I did not get a chance to go in today.
Me either.
I was checking throughout the day. And typically, we had between eight and nine people there during the day.
Which is not that different in your life.
You know, we still have 86 people with us. So encouraging you to visit that the cultural exhibit because there's some great stuff on that, in that room.
And how would they do that, Len? What's, is there a link to it?
There's a link and during every workshop time, there's a link to the room. I encourage you just to click on that link and have yourself a good time because it's some fascinating things.
Yeah. And also thank you to the, all the presenters and your time and energy. And sometimes it's nervous energy, right? Coming on. There has been, I, there's been over 100 people in in some workshops. And so that's powerful. So just so grateful that this all came together and that you chose to be a part of Niapperas family. It's been, it's been awesome.
Quick shout out to Gail on the chat who says, I'm going to go to the exhibit tomorrow.
Yeah.
Lots of love in the chat room.
Yes.
Really, really appreciate everyone who stayed on and who have been a big part of Niapperas. I'm just seeing so many names that I know and and wishing you all the best conference. We've done our best to to put one together that we think is going to be something that you're going to really like. And this is just day one, as Harvey said, where we've got three other days and evenings. So we're looking forward to seeing everybody back on Thursday.
And don't forget, it's relatively free to most people. So tell anybody you want to.
Great point, Harvey. Great point. We got room for you.
Right. And and there's room to move yourself out of your comfort zone with yoga, Zumba. It is, you know, we have, there's laughing comedy. There's, there's just so much. So we're there's this holistic family here. So and go to bed early.
And we, and we all practice social distancing, as you can see.
Yes.
That's right. And, you know, I made a comment earlier today to Eileen, you know, it was a little rocky. There were some, you know, transition problems, but it's a beautiful conference. It always has been. And it was a beautiful conference for day one.
You know, I always say at the conference and lobby day are the two best things we do. It's the power of the people right there. It's the best. I wish we could say that we were going to be at lobby in February. I wish we could. I doubt it, but but we shouldn't rule out the conference for the fall. I would love to.
Hopefully, things will be
Yeah.
a little different next year, you know? Hopefully, we'll be in a, in a different, in a different spot.
Here's a comment for you, Harvey, from the chat box from Jonathan Edwards. It's the first time I've seen Harvey sitting down.
Thanks for the props, Jonathan. I appreciate it. And Jonathan, I put you on the cover finally. Okay, you were you were asking me about that. So you made it. And looking forward to the workshop. I know it's, I've seen it before. I know it's a really good one. Yeah, it's been a relaxing day for the most part.
Harvey, there's some requests you might need to consider this tomorrow. There's the request for your cat to be part of the wow wow. So maybe Thursday, the cat could make an appearance.
I got to tell you, he looks like a good guy, but he's got a major clause. You have to play it very carefully there. Well, I'm glad people joined us today and I hope it was good. I you know, it doesn't come close, but it came. It was good. It had quality to it for sure.
I agree. I agree. And the only thing we could promise is that Thursday is going to be even better.
Absolutely.
And for the
And evening.
For the questioner in the chat box, the raffles start on Thursday.
Okay, good.
And how do, how are we doing the raffle? How does that work?
Well, there's a list that's generated from Zoom that will just be selecting the number and the person that corresponds with it.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Well, I love the chat box. I hope you all keep giving us your feedback, what, what works, what could be better? Whatever, any, anything about comments that occurred today that you'd like to challenge or you think we should do more about? You know? I do hope you appreciated what I said to the commissioner. And I mean that seriously because she's, they mean absolutely well. And it's great that they took care of housing, but non-residential mental health services are what people rely on, you know, particularly, you know, the people. And it's, we're doing everything possible. We're hoping, we're going, you know, we're pushing Washington. We're pushing the governor. It's possible he might have, he might have some borrowing power to get us through the end of the year. That's one story. But the other one is, is that we go to the legislature and try to raise taxes. And I, I suspect it'll come down to that for our position. That if the governor, now we're saying the governor don't offer the money, then we've got to, we got to bring some in. We can't take, as they, as our advocates say, we can't cut our way out of this problem, you know? I see now. Well, let's leave on a happier, let's leave on a happier note than that. So somebody say something nice.
Thank you, everybody. It was a pleasure. Stay safe. We're going to see you Thursday. We start again, Len, at 10 o'clock, right? 10 AM? With meditation and and yoga.
We have the yoga and then we'll follow that up with mindfulness from Ruth. We'll have another interlude for you and we're ready to rock with another keynote after that.
Wonderful. So everybody, take, take good care of yourself. Thank you. And Harvey, Len, Eileen, Tracy, it's been a pleasure. Veronica has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, guys. See you tomorrow.